Well, good morning. I'll call to order this November 13th, 2025, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll for us?
Yes, thank you Chair Roberts. First, our staff support today: Clerk to the Board Andrew Giraki, County Council Billy Williams. Roll call: Online Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
In the room Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Helm.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Roberts.
Here. Thank you Gary. Will you now please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing up is public communication. Testimony is limited to three minutes per person. As always, I ask comments to be respectful and courteous. As a reminder, you can also email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us and they will be accepted as a part of the public record. I will take in-person testimony first and I will turn to our clerk to ask him to please moderate the in-person and virtual testimony for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you're joining us today in person and wish to comment, this is a reminder to please fill out a blue card that can be found on the table by the center doors, deposited in the box, and I will call on you in the order that they are received. First, Mr. Brainard Brower, please come forward, you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, I'm Brainard Brower. Thanks for taking testimony and listening. I wish more citizens would, I just hope the word gets out that you're listening. I'm proud to be a resident of Clackamas County and what's going on here. So trying to be constructive as well, and I hope others try. At the same time, point out what needs to be pointed out. So, you know, you've made great progress on the SEPTIC department. I think this is the first week I could go to the counter and talk to them, and they've been very helpful in doing their best. I think the reason I'm here is because I think their process needs you to at least be involved. And I don't know who sets up the process, it predates most of the current staff, and it directly goes at saying DEQ requires this and this. When we look at the administrative rules, at least as of this Monday, no, at most it gives the county the authority to invent a process. Now, I haven't really confirmed all of that, we've looked at the administrative rule and that's what it comes down to, if it's correctly interpreted. It's clearly causing a problem. So in my case, I go out and get, you know, put up a building, so I have to do a major SEPTIC redo, which I do, a couple of years ago. I do a minor one a year ago or so, and now I'm applying to put an ADU in that building. So I have to apply for ADU permit, and I go through that process, and building provides their comments, and I have some action items there, and so on, but SEPTIC, no. You gotta start from scratch, as if you're applying for a permit. It's not been identified that I absolutely need a permit. Matter of fact, I want to go and appeal, you know, Robert has been great, he went through analysis from the available information, and we know that, okay, it's a question, but I can appeal it to DEQ and then let's discuss the question. But instead, I also have planning reviews things, but I have to do a special SEPTIC Luxe planning review that I brought up before for another $282, and it really confuses things. Plus, I will say, planning's answers have been inconsistent, even well-intentioned staff, I mean, they've been trying, I know some of them, but, you know, that's been a challenge in itself. But there should be one process if I apply for an ADU, planning, review planning. And SEPTIC can make their comments of what needs to be done. If I need to apply for a permit, that's one thing, but SEPTIC wants me to hire now an independent contractor, which I refuse to do, to evaluate the status of my system, and also submit a plot plan of where everything is. Everything that's on file. Robert had no problem analyzing my system with the available information, because I have everything up to date. So why do I have to submit everything new? I take the plot plan that's on file and resubmit it through the process, I finally figured it out with help, this week, nice help, how to do. And then, and now I'm supposed to hire this independent person to evaluate something that would take forever, $5,000 or more to do properly. As I said, I can get somebody to sign off the form probably that's licensed, but it's not going to be worth anything. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, Mr. Les Poole. Mr. Les Poole, please come forward, you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, as always, Les Poole. I'm here for about the 300th time, and I'm here always about issues that matter, not here about my own personal situation or my own private property. I'm here because I'm one of 400,000 folks in the county that are affected by what you do, and certainly by what the state and the federal government do. In my 30 years of land use and transportation experience, I think back to 2010 when the economy was really in the toilet, things were bad, and we had the Selwood Bridge Fee. And the Selwood Bridge Fee was where we, as Clackamas County, were going to fund $25 million towards replacing Multnomah County's long neglected bridge. And a referendum was filed, which is a 90-day basically process where if enough signatures are gathered, the issue goes on the ballot and the voters weigh in, and in that case, the Selwood Bridge Fee was defeated. I bring this up for a pretty obvious reason, and that is that a referendum has now been filed, many are aware, on the very large tax and vehicle registration fees and other increases that ODOT and the legislature included in HB 3991. We've got about 45 or 50 days to gather 68,000 signatures. I posted two days ago about it on my Clackamas Live Facebook page. If I post something on that page, I may get 20, 30, sometimes 60 or 70 reactions to it. In two days, I have 540 responses. I have 80 shares, I have 65 folks that have weighed in wanting to sign, wanting to help. The message is real clear. This was an ill-advised, very clumsy, clumsy process that got us to HB 3991, and regardless of anyone's opinion, I think it's critical that this be on the ballot. It really needs to be. There's a website, and the group that's sponsoring the referendum is easily accessible at NoTaxOregon, NoTaxOregon. I encourage folks to sign the petition. We need to vote on this, whether you agree with what I'm saying here or not, and I would hope that the commissioners would weigh in and give me your thoughts, or not me, but give us your thoughts about whether or not you support a public vote. Because supporting a public vote isn't asking anyone what is their opinion on it or how they're going to vote, I think that's a private matter. Need to check my time. I did pretty well, I've got about eight seconds left. So, again, there's a clear message out there, and I hope folks would follow Clackamas Live for more updates on this, and let's get this on the ballot so we can weigh in.
Thank you, Les.
You bet.
Thank you. This is a final call, if you're attending this meeting in person and have not yet spoken and wish to do so, to please fill out a blue card and deposit in the box that can be found by the center doors. Mr. Chair, with your assent, seeing no other members of the public physically present who wish to comment, I'll now move to those attending virtually. If you're attending this meeting virtually and wish to comment, please raise your hand and I will call on you in the order that I see. This is a final call, if you're attending this meeting virtually and wish to comment, please raise your hand. Mr. Chair, I see no other members of the public, either physically or virtually present, who wish to speak today.
Thank you, Andrew. I will now close the public communication portion, and I will turn to Gary and ask you what we have next.
Thank you. Next is a previously approved land use issue, adoption of a previously approved comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change in file numbers Z 0169-25 and Z 0170-25. No county general funds are involved. Caleb Hugel, Assistant County Counsel, will present. Go ahead.
Thank you Administrator Schmidt. Commissioners, the item this morning is to adopt an order approving the application just described. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 29th and voted 6 to 3 to recommend approval of the application. The Board held a public hearing on October 14th and voted unanimously to approve the application, with some additional conditions recommended by staff. The order before you today would approve the application as recommended by staff. Findings supporting the decision are attached to the order. Chair Roberts, you were absent from the Board's public hearing, you're not automatically disqualified from voting on this matter, but unless you've reviewed the record and are prepared to vote, it would be perfectly appropriate for you to abstain. It is staff's recommendation that you adopt the order. Planning staff are here today, and we would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, questions? You have a motion?
I move we adopt the previously approved comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change in files Z 0169-25 and Z 0170-25.
Second?
Commissioner Helm has moved to adopt the previously approved comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change in files Z 0169-25 and Z 0170-25, and it has been seconded by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion? Clerk, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Helm.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
I will abstain.
Motion passes 4 to 0 with one abstention, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Gary, what's next?
Thank you. Next is a presentation, the next business spotlight, you've already had one, this is the second one. Today's spotlight is Miles Fiberglass, here in Clackamas County. Laura Edmonds, the Economic Development Manager for the county, will present, and joining us as a guest is Justin Luchak, who's the Operations Manager at Miles Fiberglass. Welcome, Justin, and go ahead, please, Laura.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Honored to be before you today. As Gary has mentioned, we're very excited about, this is our second video in our series for the Business Development Grant recipient videos for the 2024 Business Development Grants. So, as mentioned, Justin Luchak is the Operations Manager with Miles Fiberglass and Composites, he's going to, he's our guest today. So just as, as many of you already are familiar with Miles Fiberglass, I'd like to remind us, though, that they are located in Clackamas County, they are a family and woman-owned business, they've been in the county for 60 years doing business. Miles is, has received a $26,000 grant to invest in an updated enterprise resource planning system that has, was to enhance their efficiencies in their bidding scheduling and production processes. So, we're going to run the video for you first, and then we are here to, Justin is here to answer any questions that you have about Miles Fiberglass. Thank you.
Thanks.
Miles Fiberglass is a family-owned business, we've been in business for 63 years, we are truly run by family members, there are a total of eight family members active in the business.
We are a fiberglass manufacturer, and we do a variety of things. We do everything from custom chairs to wastewater pieces and even front caps for RVs.
We have 60 employees, and we process about 2,000 pieces of product a month. We can do small runs, large runs, we make the product from start to finish off of a blueprint, so we do everything in-house. One thing that I think the average person doesn't know about what we do is we recycle all of our expired material, and we process them into a road barrier, and we use those road barriers to donate to Clackamas County, so they can use them around the county in transportation areas.
So we knew we wanted to use the grant funds for the ERP system. ERP is an enterprise resource planning tool that we use on our shop floor and within our offices to really pull the whole company together. It's more robust than our previous system, gives us the ability from a high level to see how projects are going, if we're making money, and to make fast decisions as a company.
Before receiving the grant, it was very difficult to find out how much time was spent on a project, tracking time, tracking material, tracking inventory, and we were all, those were all done in silos. So with the program, we bring that all together under one roof, and everything monitors off of everything else, so we can complete a product from start to finish, find out what the complete cost was, and how much we hit the target with the quote.
The ERP really allows us to communicate better with our customers in terms of timing, scheduling their projects, and completion dates for their own needs. It is showing where some of the weaknesses are, and again, we're able to plug those holes very quickly, move forward with some decision-making that allows us to grow faster. This grant in particular, I've had nothing but support all the way through, from the application process through funding. It's been so simple, so hands-on, that we just really appreciate everybody at the county.
We've been in Clackamas County the entire time for 63 years. We don't have any plans to move out of Clackamas County, it's been great with permitting, getting answers to the things you need. A lot of places aren't that supportive, so the county absolutely endorses manufacturing, and they're a big supporter of manufacturing. Thank you, and opportunity to ask any questions that you might have at this time for Miles Fiberglass, or the, around the Business Development Grant Program.
Justin, would you like to say any comments? I saw you in the video there, so.
Just that, we really appreciate the grant. We've, we've kind of always been on the fence about, you know, updating IP systems and computer software, you know, we were always focused on improving, you know, getting new equipment and stuff for the actual product, but when it comes to the, the business development, things like ERP systems can be kind of scary, because it changes everything and how you do everything in, as far as management. So, when we were able to secure the grant, it just kind of was that got us over the fence, and, you know, we've been going through a lot of training over the last two years, and we've been live with the program since the beginning of July, so we're about five months in, so we're, we're still getting a lot of it ironed out and stuff, but it's been a big improvement as far as like tracking and accountability and, and being able to cost everything that we, that we do. We're a contract manufacturer, so we're doing new stuff all the time, so we don't always have the luxury of, of, you know, getting economies of scale for every product we do, so knowing our costing at the very beginning is really important, and that's, that's something that, from my end, has been extremely beneficial, as long as, as well as several other things like scheduling efficiencies, quoting, quoting efficiency, quoting accuracies, things like that have been a big benefit.
Great. I believe Commissioner Schrader has a comment. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I just want to say how wonderful it is to see this multi-generational manufacturing business be here in our county. And so, Justin, I have to ask, how many awards has your mom received? Because she's been a major force in manufacturing in this county, not only in this county, but nationally and in the, in the state of Oregon as well.
Oh, I don't know, I haven't been keeping count, but it's been going on since I was a little kid. I mean, I'm sure she's had a few, several, several, I'll say. But, yeah, she has been, I mean, she's at, you know, she couldn't be here today, she wouldn't be here today, but she's at OBI today, so she's involved with pretty much every business, business vested interest in Oregon, so, yeah, she's, she's a powerhouse.
And, and you are filling, filling the shoes of the, of this company so well, it's nice to see you here and to be part of this family business today.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it, I do my best. You know, family businesses are tough for, you know, it's, it's like a family, families are tough, you know? But, but, you know, we, she's, she's pretty amazing at being the glue, you know, that's kind of, that's, that's what I probably appreciate the most, is the glue that you have to be as the, as the leader, you know? You know, the more in leadership I get at my level, I, you know, you have to make sacrifices, it's not just about, you know, getting your way, you have to, you kind of have to, you know, your, your, what, what you want kind of comes second sometimes as a leader, and that's, that's important, I can, I definitely get that and learn that, so.
That's a, that's a great philosophy of servant leadership. Amazing.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I just want to also echo what Commissioner Schrader said, knowing your mom and your, and your grandfather, I guess, too, for going back. So, love to actually tour your new facility, because I know you've been in two different locations and now you're in a third, so love to tour your, tour your facility, but I do remember when I was a little kid, working with my neighbor, building a trimaran in the backyard, so laid my first piece of fiberglass when I was like 11 years old, so my question is, are you guys into carbon fiber, or moving into carbon fiber?
I definitely have some carbon fiber materials, but we don't have any, like, we don't have any jobs that, right now, that require it. We have had in the past that have certain spots that have curb, certain laminate schedules that have carbon fiber in them, but it's usually like an R&amp;D project, a one-off project, we're not, I, I haven't been, I haven't seen large-scale projects with carbon fiber. It's mostly the same process, though, but those, those are usually pretty niche, niche industry.
Yeah, just loved to, at some point in time, no rush, but, yeah, tour your new facility, so.
Yeah.
Again, thanks for your investment in Clackamas County, and we're glad to have you as a business.
Yeah, thank you. Glad to be here.
Commissioner West.
Hi. You guys have been in business, right, since like the early 60s or something, a family-owned?
63, yeah.
Since 63, that's really spectacular, and thank you for all the jobs and the economic vitality you bring to, to our county, we really appreciate it. I have a question, I know that you guys sold your building to the Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County for the Caring Place. Are you guys involved with that organization at all in working to help build out that recovery infrastructure? I know that you guys sold your building and consolidated elsewhere, but I'm curious in your involvement with the county, if you guys are also engaged in that type of work?
I have to refer more to my mom, my aunt, the two owners, about that, but I know we have been involved as far as, we've been at a lot of the, the meetings at the Abernathy about it and stuff, as far as more involvement than that, I'm not, I'm not aware at this moment.
Okay. Well, well, thank you, and thank you for being a job creator and innovator in the county, we need more companies like Miles Fiberglass, and we want companies like yours to know that we appreciate you, and we're open for business, and we hope that more people choose to do business here. We just did a walkthrough at Swaglock, we talked to the Board about that, I couldn't think Commissioner Schrader brought it up the other day. They purposely chose their manufacturing company in Clackamas, on purpose, they moved from Multnomah County because of the culture and the environment that we foster here. The President was very clear that it was a very mindful decision that she made to, to bring her business over the county border, so I hope that you feel that, it sounds like that you feel that we're a good partnership with us, and we want to continue to foster that, and have more small businesses and job creators choose Clackamas County and have that partnership, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you Commissioner, Commissioner Helm.
Commissioner West took the words right out of my mouth, actually, but I will repeat, and I've known your mom a long time, I, I didn't have the pleasure of knowing your grandfather, but I know he was a very vital person in the organization for many, many years. I just want to thank you for your partnership with the county, because I know you guys have done a lot with the county, and I, partnerships are so important, and not just the amount of jobs, but the, the land for the Caring Place, and working with HSCCC and, and other people within the county, it's, it's a great boon for all of us, so I just want to thank you, and your mom and I have broken bread several times together, so I know all the good things she does, she's very humble about it, too, so I just, I want to say how much I appreciate all you guys do.
Yeah, my grandfather, one, one, a really important thing for him was always giving back to community, and, and he was particular about like education, and at CCC, he gave a lot to CCC, and he, he just wanted to, to give back more than he ever had. You know, he, he would, he would oftentimes give, give to charities that, you know, just asked, and he didn't really have much affiliation with them, he just, you know, he, he, he grew up very poor, and so he was, as long as he was comfortable, he was always happy giving, giving to what he had, so.
Great. Anything else Commissioner? I just wanted to maybe have you talk just a little bit more about who some of your clients are, and maybe a little bit more about your products, and I could tell there was a variety of them, I mean, do you do, for example, one product more on a regular basis, and just try and understand that.
So, we are a contract manufacturer, so we actually don't have any of our own products, all of our products are, you know, a B2B, we do contract manufacturing, so right now, our number one product is going to be in, it's like a wastewater for a company called NEFCO, they, we do a lot of wastewater panels, tanks and stuff like that. We do RV, RV trailer end caps that go on like the front of RV caps. We have, we're not doing this project right now, but over the last 20, 30 years with Gunderson, which was, used to be in, used to be in Portland, not there anymore, or not, not our line, or the trains are now built in Mexico, but we would still do a lot of their train car ceiling, roof panels, and then sidewall panels. We do a lot of, a lot of production work for those. We're also building wastewater tanks, we're doing, we just got a contract to build some, some cones that are going to go on the front of airplanes, out, yeah.
Wow.
You know, all these kind of crazy, crazy things. You know, we have some, some work with Northwest Natural that we do, some panel covers for gas covers for them, we do some junk, like electric junction boxes and stuff like that. You know, everything from, you know, stuff that's going to be pristine scene, and then stuff that's going to get buried in the ground. So we, we deal with a lot, a little bit of everything.
Very diverse. Do you, is the majority of it in Oregon, or does it, you go outside Oregon?
Um, it, that really depends, I would say the majority, I'd say the majority at this point is, yeah, probably delivered outside, outside of Oregon at this point, right now, we're, we're delivering a lot outside of Oregon, but we do, we do, we do significant amount inside, too, especially when Gunderson was up here, we were, we were definitely shipping most of our stuff to Oregon, but it depends on the ebbs and flows of the customers we have at, at certain times, yeah.
Great. Well, we're thrilled to have you here in Clackamas County for so many years, we want to say thanks, all of us echo that, I think that just for the public's knowledge, maybe you can just tell us your address, in case there's a business out there wants a contract with you.
Yes, we're located at 11401 Southeast Jennifer Street, it's the 212 exit going out to Estacada, right off 205.
Fantastic, right down by the airstream almost, then, on our last business highlight, so fantastic. Well, thank you very much for coming today, and we sure appreciate it. And a big shout-out also to Dan Johnson, Laura Edmonds, for helping pull this all together, thank you both very much. So if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and move forward. Gary, what's next?
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Next, you have two public hearings. The first public hearing is first reading of an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code Chapter 6.05 Noise Control. There are no county general funds involved. Presenting is Dan Johnson, Director of Transportation and Development, and Caleb Hugel, Assistant County Counsel. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Chair Roberts and Commissioners. So we transition from this gala of looking at the video into a discussion around some possible code amendments. We're here to basically codify discussions about changes the Board has been having to dial. dialogue regarding for some time. Um, these discussions went back all the way to 2020 in regards to proposed changes. The board would like to see in Chapter Six, uh, more specifically our noise ordinance. Um, I just want to highlight briefly, this is in the report. There are a couple of specific changes. Um, one, there were a number of housekeeping edits and spelling corrections that were done. Uh, the code's been in place for some time, so there need to be some housekeeping to it. Secondly, uh, there was a shift. Uh, the shift is to who will be processing these noise variance requests. Historically, it had been completed by Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. The board some time ago felt, uh, code enforcement and DTD was probably more well-versed regarding some of the codes and issues in coordination with other programs than DTD. So we've already operationalized that and that's been happening for some time, but this, uh, revises the code and makes it more specific and accurate. It also, uh, directs, deals with appeals to these variances. And so essentially it directs appeals to the county administrator, Gary Schmidt. Um, he has willingly volunteered due to the few number that we have in any given year to hear these appeals with, uh, with assistance from staff. Uh, and it also extends the deadline for that appeal process, uh, moves it from a fifteen day to a twenty-one day appeal process to deal with some of the issues we were having for, with processing requests of that nature. It also adds, uh, language about, uh, primary benefit of variance requests of this nature. They have to be for the public good. Um, these are not, hey, I want to go hang out and have a huge party on that long. A lot of them is, are, are associated with public good with you can various construction projects, the infrastructure, et cetera. It also clarifies, um, and takes into consideration if they've had a previous noise variance request and we have gotten complaints regarding that request, it takes that in consideration when looking at their appeal. And last but not least, um, it requires a affidavit that the applicant seeking a variance has contacted all adjoining property owners and that, um, applicant has provided a contact information for a point of contact who will be available during the noise generating event. Um, one of the desires the board has said consistently was, one, I want to go back and remind the board, uh, the sheriff's office is still the enforcement entity as it comes to this noise variance, but also there was a board's desire to make sure whoever was generating the noise, adjoining property owners had the ability to, one, be aware of what was going to be going on and number two, um, they had a point of contact, uh, for inquiries or issues that were raised with the event. So with that, we'd be happy to, I will affirm to you that we have worked closely with County Counsel and Caleb and all, uh, his great work to review the proposed ordinance and he concurs with, uh, the revisions of proposed and we'd be happy to answer the question I have.
All right. Go ahead, Commissioner. Um, sorry, you're first.
Um, we recently discussed this and took a vote to bring it to this point, correct, Gary?
Uh, yes, you did.
And can you remind me of my vote? Did I vote no?
You voted yes, but you had concerns about the appeal process and should there be examples when the appeal goes to the board, not to the administrator?
Right. I still hold those concerns. Um, yeah, I, I, that's, I'm remembering, you know, we just take a lot of votes. I just want to make sure I was clear on exactly how that played out. It's hard to remember all those details, so thank you for that reminder, Gary. Um, yeah, I still share those same concerns that we just happened to see, and these things change even from when we first started talking about this. I think we've seen sometimes the weaponization of noise under the guise of the First Amendment in a way that doesn't respect time, manner and place and, um, in a way that can be really harmful to other neighbors and community members that, uh, whose lives are completely disrupted at all hours in the evening here in the Portland area. I fully am a strong advocate for the, might be the strongest ever, but, uh, advocate for the First Amendment, but I, but sometimes that shrouds some behavior that I think isn't protected. So I'm concerned about abdicating the board's role still in this instance and, and how we do that. I still share that concern. I don't know how I'm going to vote today. I'll listen to my colleagues because I respect all of you. I just think with recent news, it is impacting how I think about this in a different way and maybe, um, changing my mind on, on making sure that when necessary, the electors can step in and make, um, a decision, uh, on issues that could be of high priority under, um, noise ordinance regulation and ordinances. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chair, I'm sorry, I was wrong. Andrew, just check the vote.
I did vote no.
You voted no.
So I thought I did vote no. I was like, oh, because I, but thank you. I did vote no.
Thank you.
Now knowing my history accurately, um, I may still be a no. We'll see. I don't know exactly, but those are still my concerns. I'll voice them, colleagues. I act, you know, and you may go a different direction than me and I'm totally okay with that I'm not. And I don't think that overall this is a bad policy. I've just, this, this reality is influen, and this recent news is influencing how I don't want to look at this. Um, and the court case with Judge Ellen Rosenblum, all those things are impacting our local, my local decision here as we look at things as a whole. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I, uh, the day you all discussed this, I was in Salem, um, discussing, uh, or with a transportation group. Um, so the history I have here is, is, uh, mixed and varied, but one example I'll bring up, which is going to lead to a question, um, but the example I brought up, I think even, uh, former Sheriff Craig Roberts remembers this one apparently because we talked about it this morning. Uh, a contractor who, uh, um, claimed that he, he notified all the neighbors and, um, and did not actually notify any neighbors whatsoever and decided that construction or the work would take place, um, almost around the clock. So from like midnight, uh, they did a concrete pour from midnight all the way through the night. No one slept. Everyone was up in arms about it. And again, big issue was they claimed that they had notified all the neighbors and, and got this, that, you know, this permit. Um, and so getting to that question, uh, my question is, is that, uh, see here, it says affidavit to, you know, notify all the neighbors. Do you, how thorough is that affidavit? Do you get a copy of the notice itself that is circulated or just literally I check the box and sign that I've notified all the neighbors?
Affidavids are something we're using more and more. You just talked about them yesterday with short-term rentals.
That's right.
The discussion will be, we have to develop that affidavit, that intent and desires to be very specific about actions that are required. You are notifying them of the action you are looking to take, to take place. Uh, my assumption it was include information around the hours, what hours you're looking to, uh, be waived, kind of the specifics around the variance request. Um, affirm the fact that you've circulated a contact name, that they have your, whoever that individual may be, it may not be the individual meeting the door, and all the adjoining property owners have been informed. That is the intent. The intent is to get, because I remember that lovely day, I remember the day that you called regarding that particular project and a lot of the concern that we heard with that was the, was the notification component associated with it. Um, I will be honest with you, some of these things have to happen. Uh, they just, you know, it's 115 degrees out and we're, it's around, that one was around concrete, um, and it was a desire to pour concrete. That doesn't mean we can't do better in making sure people know who to contact and that's kind of the intent around the revisions that you see before you today.
Yeah, there was a, the, one of the former chairs of Clackamas County had this statement, I won't get it right, I'm sure I won't get it perfect, but, um, people have the right for the peaceful enjoyment of their property. Peaceful, quiet enjoyment of their property. Matter of fact, that previous chair was from Wilsonville, by the way. So you can probably surmise maybe who that person was.
Interesting.
And, you know, knowing, you know, and another example, that's out of our control. We can't control it, but in rural Clackamas County, you can fire a weapon whenever you, what do you want? Um, and a friend of mine who was a former Vietnam vet, um, had, you know, PTSD and one of the neighbors who bought a property next to him, um, they really enjoyed firing their weapons, which is perfectly legal in rural Clackamas County, except it created a lot of stress for him. And ultimately he had a heart attack, actually, a few weeks after notifying me about this. And when I looked into it, unfortunately, there was nothing we could do. I contacted the sheriff's office, there's nothing we can do and I, I, this isn't going to fix that. But noise does impact people. Um, and, um, you know, my father-in-law, who is also a veteran, um, you know, he's also very sensitive to noises and so forth. So it's, it's something that's not, certain people react differently and, you know, I think a lot of people in Portland are sometimes upset about noise when they have it. So granted, everyone has a right to do things, um, but I, I think that, um, making Clackamas County, uh, a welcoming place for, again, for people have, and I agree with, you know, having the right for peaceful enjoyment of your property. Um, you know, that shouldn't squash anyone's right, public right to either free speech or, you know, the other example of, you know, firing weapons and so forth. But all I ask is that, and I'll look closely, I'll support this, but I will, I just ask that there be some kind of a copy of whatever it is they circulate to the neighbors as well as an area, knowing what the area of neighbors are going to contact. I totally understand, you know, the circumstances of the concrete, you know, on hot days and so, I get, I totally get that. But literally to, to misrepresent that they had contacted neighbors, that, that's wrong. That, that's deceit.
One, one additional thing I think we should bring up is a lot of these pro, not a lot, and I shouldn't say a lot, but we do have, for example, capital projects that we're operating and we do operate some of these capital projects at night. Um, and I want to make sure that we're clear about, we may be the applicant in some of these circumstances, um, but when we are the applicant, we are going above and beyond kind of these general criteria because you hear the word public good in here. Um, so our expectation is if we are going to be working at night, which is a public benefit in some instances because there's less traffic, it's quicker, there's no, um, variety of reasons, it's safer, that we are doing above and beyond what the code requires in regards to notification distances, trying to reduce the time, et cetera, so.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner West?
Um, is there any language in here that allows the board, if necessary, to pull it to the board and to bring it back before us on a rare occasion where something is more high-profile or needs, um, the oversight of the elected body?
No.
No, so I will still be a no on this.
Commissioner Helm?
I do believe I raised the affidavit, affidavit question last time we had a presentation on this about whether it, if an affidavit is signed, is it then turned in and we double check? And that I did, that I did ask that question before and, um, just to make sure that we're checking all the boxes and everything. Um, I understand your concern, Commissioner West, but I also feel like we need to have something in place that has a little bit of teeth right now and I don't feel like we do. Um, so I will also be supporting this. Um, but I also, we did have this discussion about things that were higher profile, maybe being brought to us outside of it, right? So I think there, if there's something that maybe is not within this, uh, our administrator would bring it forward, um, just so we would have the opportunity to weigh in. Um, I, I'm dealing with a, an issue right now with, um, a neighborhood group where the person next door fires their gun all hours of the day. And I don't know that this would address it, but, um, people do have the right to enjoy the peaceful use of their property. So, and, you know, I just think that there needs to be something in place and I think we've kind of, um, thrown up our hands in the past and said, ah, we don't want to deal with this, ah. I, I think we do need to deal with it and I think we need to have something that, a set of policy, can it be revised? I think absolutely it can be revised, um, should we need to later. Um, but I do share your concerns.
Um.
Can he respond to that?
I was, I kind of wanted to go, did you have a response to this, Gary?
I do.
Yeah, so I thought I might go, if you don't mind, can I go to Gary and then?
I have a direct response to Commissioner Helm.
All right. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I'm a supporter of this. If we have the ability to pull up when necessary as an elected body on rare but extreme situations, I'm always going to default to not abdicating our elected role and I, and I, I'm sensitive to that. I think, um, at the end of the day, if it is a high-end of profile issues, our constituents will need us to weigh in. I'm a yes if we have language that gives us the prerogative, though it would be very rare, maybe never. Also looking at current events that we never thought we would see, that we do see today, to step in as the leaders and the policy setters of this, of this county to do so in extreme situations. Ideally, most of it's never going to be that way and it will be handled beautifully and wonderfully by our very competent county administrator. However, we are passing the buck a little bit about what our role should be here on extreme situations. That's why I'm a no unless we make that small change. I would, I, and if y'all would consider that, we can get there as a full body, but that would be my ask.
Gary?
Thank you. Um, so, um, several things. So since you've had this in place to allow the board, so twice the board has delegated me to do the appeals because in one case you were on a recess and you weren't willing to change your recess dates and the second because of the urgency of it, because the old code said fifteen days, there wasn't time for you to convene a public meeting. In both cases, they were music concerts in a neighborhood after 10:00 PM. And I follow strictly the law. There, in the code, there's five tests whether to allow it or not. I don't use my personal opinion, I just follow the law. And in both cases, I overturned staff's recommendation of denying the concerts. So I would advise, my recommendation is, obviously if there's a, uh, an event that is something I think will draw your attention, I'm going to talk to you about it informally before I would just hear an appeal if you were to delegate that to me. So certainly I would, obviously you're my bosses, I would seek your input while I would still follow the law in reviewing those requests without violating ex parte communications. Caleb, I know you're about to say that. But I also want to say, I mean, as, as a standard practice, you don't ever appears on, appeals on any code enforcement planning events. You have a hearings officer. There's a whole process where that does not come to the board. So this is sort of following that process. Thank you. Caleb wants to comment on what I said.
Only to add that there, there are additional issues besides ex parte communication. Ex parte communication is, would be if Administrator Schmidt spoke to you about the application and its merits without the applicant being able to rebut whatever was said. Um, but there's also a, an applicant for a noise of variance is an applicant for a quasi-judicial decision and they're entitled to an impartial decision maker. And if someone says, well, Administrator Schmidt is the decision maker, but he's taking orders from other, other people, knows his, you know, who he reports to, there's an argument that, that sort of eliminates that impartiality to some extent. I don't know if it would be successful if Administrator Schmidt's decision was challenged, but that's something to consider. Who, the point is we have an independent decision maker making these, these decisions devoid of policy concerns.
Great. Commissioner West?
Yeah, but, um, well, in the city of Wilsonville, the board makes those decisions. They don't have a hearings officer. We'd make them all the time and we would have to make sure ex parte conversations, we're happy to all very educated and aware of that as elected. And it's my understanding we do still have the right on an extreme circumstance to pull something if we want to, um, on land use or the issues that would normally go before the hearings officer. That the board still could pull in here something. That's been what I've been told while sitting here. Unless I've been told wrong, it's my understanding that we do have the authority to, to do that on, in that situation.
That's not my understanding. It's my understanding that the zoning ordinance directs certain things to the board and certain things to the hearings officer and the, and the board cannot take something that the code directs to the hearings officer, the land use hearings officer, and then make a decision on it.
Okay. Um, well, even with that, if that's, if that's the fact and if I'm misunderstanding, which is possible, um, I, I still believe that this elected body should have at times, and though rarely, um, the final say. And again, Gary, you do consult us on situations and then often make your own independent decision, no matter what the board majority might say, because you have the privilege to do so. Well, you've been delegated that authority. There are instances where the board needs to be the leader in this decision and that's why I think that this isn't a huge ask or carve-out for the situation. But you don't necessarily need my vote either and I'm not going to be mad about it, but this is just, I feel strongly about, um, our role as electeds and that, and it matters to me in this situation.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, um, I just want to just kind of bring your attention, uh, I know we talked about STRs yesterday, but part of the STR thing is noise, right? That brings up a lot of stuff. That brings up a lot of stuff. And it, I, I'll just tell you that I, you know, the way I learned about PTSD and whether, you don't have to be a veteran to have PTSD, right? But the way I learned about it, I actually really felt really bad, because I turned out, it turns out that something I was doing when I was racing was driving someone crazy, I didn't know about it, and, and I distressed someone, I really felt, years ago, I felt really horrible about it. So that's when it became, I, I recognize that. I also recognize that as friends and family that have pets, that pets also sometimes react, like on 4th of July, for example, things like that. But I only bring these things up to mention that I, you know, I think part of being good neighbors is communication, and I think that's why the affidavit is important. If someone has a pet or a person that they're going to be, they have an opportunity to stay at a friend's house or, you know, whatnot, they can prepare, that's the point of this, right? There's things we can't control. But I think we're doing the best we can, and I think the leverage, again, that the administrator has in this is kind of, I, I think addressed to a certain degree, the, your concern, Commissioner West. The other thing that I also agree with here is, this has no place, I guess, in the sheriff's office, so moving this into code enforcement is something else I also support. So all those things said, you know, I think, I just want to make sure that, you know, we do our best recognizing that, you know, people's sensitivities, health issues, that we're just making Clackamas County, you know, the best place to live. And I bear, I bear some of that, that, we all do, right? But I, that weighs on me, and I can tolerate a lot of noise, more so than a lot of my neighbors. But I do like a quiet night, by the way. Chair, I yield back.
All right. I, kind of my input there, Commissioner West. As, as a former sheriff, they would come to us, and we would work with the county, particularly on some of the issues that had to do with construction. And it really is important, I think, that the challenge I, I saw is really trying to make sure we're doing everything timely, and doing all the background and getting it, and trying to be, I would just say nimble enough to get decisions one way or the other. And that's why I kind of lean towards really the new proposal, that, the amendments that are being recommended. I think that, I agree with you, I would say 98 times out of 100, it's probably no problem. And I think you are right, there could be some, that could rise to our concern and attention. But I also kind of feel like Gary's going to be doing kind of his due diligence and going, Commissioners, look, we got an issue, and we need to shift gears, whatever that might be. But I do feel that it's, it would be rare. A lot of these, I think, are pretty straightforward. The big issues ones we would have to deal with a lot of times would be some huge event planner that's wanting to have some on some land, and, and a lot of times, they actually, a couple situations that I remember, they were basically, we denied them, and they were still trying to move ahead with it, and kind of trying to slide under the carpet, and all the neighbors were up in arms. So again, I think it's really, you know, I, I, I agree with the ordinance amendment, and I would lean towards that, so. Gary has--
Commissioner Schrader would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Schrader.
Go on mute.
You're, you're muted.
Okay, just unmuted, and I mute, as you know, because I come from the barking dog noise contingency here. They've been quiet today, because one of them is having surgery at the moment, which is why I'm here, and not with you at the dais, but I digress. I'm okay moving forward with this. I understand Commissioner West's concerns that we have to be responsible to our citizens in this county and be aware of it, but I really don't think that this precludes necessarily our involvement of recognizing it and working with constituents. For me, it's more of a streamlining this, so we can get things done more quickly, and, and really kind of in a, in a, in a fair and just way. I, I really don't see it as something that's going to preclude the phone calls, the information, citizens contacting us, and working with our administrator, I think we can help inform that decision. Again, I don't, I don't really see this as much of a either-or situation. And, you know, I've been here a while, and with Sheriff Roberts, and Paul, I remember your barking dog ordinance too, and I understand the need for it. But I, I think this is good, good, solid work, and I do think as, as commissioners, we'll still be involved in any conversations like this one way or the other, so. I can move forward with it today, but if someone wants to have language, Commissioner West, that, that we can come up with in a, in a decent amount of time to, you know, give you some comfort, that would be fine with me. So, that's all I got to say.
Okay. Comments? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues on this, like 99% of the time here on everything, like all the things, like with the sheriffs and the structural changes and language, I agree with all of that. But there is that 1% of the time where it is, could be, could be very high-profile, where we don't need to ask anyone's, where we don't need to be blocked from stepping in to making a decision for the good of our communities. And Lord knows what's going to happen next week in the news, or even tomorrow. It is wild times that we are living in. I am just very sensitive about incrementally or slowly giving up the ability for the board to make decisions on issues. I don't think it's a big deal to ask for language, that we have the prerogative to step in when we want to to make a decision, or call something forward if we feel like it's there. And we probably would work hand-in-hand with the county administrator to do that. We don't know who the future county administrator is, we do not know who this future board is, and we don't know what future situation, but to fully abdicate our role in this scenario, to me, is I probably would never vote for that in any scenario. And I think that, that language that I'm asking for is not that big of a switch, but it, that's where it gets to a unanimous yes and not a one no. And, but that's okay too, like you just don't have to prioritize that, and I respect you, but that, that's where I'm at.
All right.
Gary? Let's talk this through, so you have two options, in my opinion. One, you go back to the original language, that the Board of Commissioners hears the appeal, but you may delegate it to the administrator. So we flip it. It always comes to you unless you delegate it to me. So 99% of the time, you'll probably delegate it to me, otherwise it's yours. Or the flip of that, it comes to me in case the board, but I have, I have, I'm required to--
Clean what I just said?
So we can, we can do it that way.
Reverse it, is what you're saying.
So it comes to the Board of Commissioners, but they may choose to delegate it on a case-by-case basis to the administrator to hear the appeal.
Commissioner Savas?
I, I remember visiting this, and the reason that the board rejected it goes, is number one, timeliness, number two, the volume of those requests, right? And then those becoming political. So I really believe that as is drafted, as is intended, with the administrator making the call, that a high-profile situation, you know, could give us the opportunity, as it's written, to have some leverage. I also heard very clearly our legal counsel and what the board's code is with regards to how that is handled, right, with the hearings officer, however the procedures are. So we can't conflict with that code. So I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward, because I think some of these changes are important, right? And they're of value. And most of this that we're, that's in this, most of the content of the changes is necessary and would not factor into Commissioner West's concern. But there's opportunities, I think, for us to deal with this again, to make any kind of advances should the need come up. And the fact that they have been very infrequent, I think it's worthwhile, that there's more good here and very infrequent issues where it's not, might be a problem. So I, Chair, I suggest we move forward with the hearing.
Other thoughts? I kind of have a question for counsel on this. So if you were to make an amendment, more or less, that was just discussed, would that be doable in that manner? Would that cause conflict? I guess that's why I'm not clear.
As I understand it, Administrator Schmidt said we could amend this language so that they go to the board by default unless the board delegates that authority to Administrator Schmidt. That's what the code was before. It's, the, the noise ordinance said everything goes to the board, but there's another provision of the, the county code that says, and the board can delegate its quasi-judicial authority, and that's what it did. The, the issue was that it took a week or how long to get a board order before the board to vote on to formally delegate that, and we lose time. And, and that problem would still present itself if we did what Administrator Schmidt just suggested.
So I guess as a point of order, Gary, just looking for your guidance on this, it probably, should we go ahead with the public input at this time?
There's two blue cards, so let's hear what the public has to say, and you can think about it, and then come back for discussion.
No more questions from colleagues. Okay. So I'll now open the public hearing, and Clerk, would you help moderate the input from the public for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you're attending this meeting in person today and wish to comment on this specific matter only, this is a reminder to please fill out a blue card and deposit it in the box that can be found by the center doors. I will call them the order that they are received. First blue card, Mr. Les Poole. Please come forward, you'll have three minutes.
Noise, one of your favorite subjects. This is a dicey one. I'm not here to oppose this change. I had the same concerns that Commissioner West expressed about putting all of the authority in Commissioner, Commissioner, excuse me, in the county administrator's hands, and not that I wouldn't trust him, but I think there's got to be a very, very clear threshold of what, what the definition is of something that's going to end up coming to you. I think back to the flash mobs and concerts and things that were going on years ago. It was pretty easy to, to address that, it was unacceptable, it was illegal. The county did a good job of putting an end to that nonsense. But in this case, we're now dealing with private noise, I'll call it, occasional private noise, like a big wedding or get-together, and then public project noise, or public events that are noisy. Certainly, if the county decided to have a fireworks display in July, that would be acceptable, but that would also be one of those exceptions. So my concern is that there needs to be a very, very clear line of, of authority on how this goes. I, I would also interject that how these are handled, regardless of who makes a decision, is, is critical. If, if handling these issues becomes too much of a punitive penalty thing with excessive fines, I, I don't think that's the way to go. Oh, the, the last thing is, that I was curious about would be notification area. I agree, we need to, we need to have a policy, and there is one, but in terms of how large of a notification area, if someone's going to have a target practice event, there's going to be a lot of noise, they're going to hear it from two miles away, so I'm, I'm not suggesting we need to notify everyone within two miles. But when you get outside, especially away from town in quiet rural property, and you start making noise, it really travels. So a very clear, again, clarification of what notification would be required, and how that would, how that would work, and obviously how we handle violations. I'll wrap up with a thought. Currently, there's a public project that is incredibly controversial, and that is the water treatment plant that I've spoken about, that controversial plant. And while the noise is acceptable, it's a public project, but what's happened out there is the contractors are private. And so those private contractors sometimes are doing some things that are not good business, and I think exceeding the, the peaceful nature of the area. So I look at construction projects quite a bit differently than private events and private uses, so clarity there would, would really help. And, you know, as always, I appreciate the opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Brainerd Baur. Please come forward, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you again, I'm Brainerd Baur. I don't know a lot about this, I mean, I'm certainly, you know, I mean, if somebody's had a concert at night, you know, loud, understandable restrictions, I certainly know of vehicles that echo the whole neighborhood, I know of people who can smell that are burning garbage and poisoning neighborhoods, particularly when it lingers, there's issues that exist. My main point is, we're all citizens of Clackamas County, and I'm concerned about too much bureaucracy. I'm reading this for the first time, hopefully accurately, and it specifically, in my, in my reading here, was saying that from 7:00 a.m., from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., 50 dB, and then from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., 60 dB, so a daytime noise ordinance, very low one. So an overzealous public servant disrupts public trust in our public servants if we get too much bureaucracy. So I'm asking you to read the fine print and see that we are achieving the gross issues without gaining distrust in public service. I mean, the underlying tone in this nation is people's dis, upset with public servants, we're not getting testimony here, you know, and yet we need public services and trust. And so I'm really concerned from my initial reading that we, that we're in the fine print adding bureaucracy without just simply achieving the goals that everybody can reasonably agree on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a final call. If you're attending this meeting in person and wish to comment on this specific matter or have not yet done so, to please fill out a blue card and deposit it in the box that can be found by the center doors. Seeing no other physically present members of the public who wish to comment for this specific public hearing, Chair, I'll now move with your assent to those attending online. If you're attending this meeting virtually and wish to comment on this specific public hearing only, this is your opportunity to please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. This is a final call, if you're attending this meeting virtually and wish to comment on this specific public hearing, to please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. Mr. Chair, seeing no other members of the public physically or virtually present today who wish to comment on this specific public hearing.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and turn back to my colleagues. Any further discussion or comments? Yes, Gary, I'm sorry.
So Staff and I have been actually thinking while you've been hearing the public hearing. So here is, is an additional option for you. If you allow the administrator to be the appeals person, you could add another layer of appeal, where if the person disagreed with the administrator's decision, then it goes to the Board of County Commissioners. The only downside to that is it would add another 20 days to the process, and so if someone applies too close to their event, we're kind of not having enough time to do all these appeals. That is another option, that if the person disagrees with my decision, then it goes to the Board of County Commissioners. Dan and Caleb, please come back up.
I, thank you for being creative in listening and taking my concerns. Thank you, colleagues, like, even though I'm clearly the one, I appreciate that. Does the, would the board in that language have the right to refuse to take up the appeal? Like, we don't have to take up the appeal, we could be fine with the county administrator's decision, to where we don't believe it rises to the level in, in our own discretion? It's the discretion of the board to pick something up?
Language could be drafted that way, it would be discretionary review, like appealing to the Oregon Supreme Court. You petition the court for review, and it can refuse, and, and allow the administrator's decision to stand. But you, there would still need to be time for the board to consider that in a public forum.
Yeah, and, and we could, I think that detail could be worked out, I just think that that gets to, you know, like, for example, the, the city of Portland refused to enforce its own sound ordinances while people were legitimately suffering across the street in, in low-income housing. You know, and then maybe somebody, if that happened in Clackamas County, there were some unrest, they could appeal to the board, and the board could say yea or nay on whether or not they picked that up. That's one extreme example. A wedding that you need to plan for is not extreme. 99.9% of all cases are completely fine going through the county administrator. We may never, ever see the situation. But to fully disengage, that's too far for me, and that's kind of, you know, so I, I like that idea, I'm fine with it, that would get me to a yes, something along the lines of what you're proposing.
Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I feel like I'm in a rerun of a movie, because we've been here so many times about this. So the delay is, is the practical, practical reason as to why we chose not to do this, because in reality, if you look at what we have done, and you look at, we've seen them, so I appreciate the fact that if you looked in your email in your inbox, and since you've been a commissioner, you've seen these notices come to us, and I read them, because, you know, we've asked for it. You know, there is, there is that time thing, right? People say, okay, I'm a month before, I got X amount of time, but to add two or three weeks could, you know, it be off or not, right? It would be a delay. And then you got to make sure that the Board of County Commissioners are in session, and you actually can convene, right? So it just adds, you know, further delays. So I, I, I'm, I'm inclined-- So I, I, I'm, I'm inclined to move forward, and I guess the last thing I want to say is that we're not adding any more regulation, we're just refining and making it more understandable. So that's all I have. Chair, I yield back. And I'm ready to make a motion when you're ready.
All right, well, I would entertain a motion.
Chair, I move. Will you read the ordinance by title only?
And is there a second?
Second.
And just procedurally, did you close the public hearing?
Yes. I thought I did, didn't I?
I don't think you did.
I didn't. Well, I will now officially close the public hearing if I didn't, and colleagues' discussion, and you made a motion, it's been seconded by Diane Helm, so I'll repeat that. Commissioner Savis has moved to read the ordinance by title only. Commissioner Helm has seconded. Any further discussion? All right, call for a poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Helm.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
No.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye with a, sorry, Ben.
It isn't, it happens. Motion passes four to one, Mr. Chair.
All right. So next, it looks like the clerk, would you assign an ordinance, a number and read by title only for us?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The ordinance is numbered zero-four dash twenty-two-five, an ordinance amending county code chapter six point zero-five, noise control.
All right, thank you. So if there's no other objection, the second reading will be during our regular business meeting on December 4th, 2025, and...
Before we move on, so would you like staff to work on what we discussed, and that the applicant can appeal a decision of the administrator to come to, for the board, at the board's discretion? Would you like us to add that language or not?
I'd like to sit down with legal counsel and staff and better under, I, I have my memory of having that conversation in the past, except Mr. Caleb was not here with us back then, so I want a refresher, and I think probably more of a work session might be in order if, if that's going to be entertained by my colleagues.
I...
We would not have, you would not have time for a policy session before this business meeting?
No, I'm, I'm thinking about post, post-December afterwards. I'm not, I'm not, my, my comments were, I, maybe I misunderstood, my comments were about future changes.
Okay, got it. I'm asking if you'd like us to make any changes to this proposed ordinance before December 4th, when you have your second hearing, what Commissioner West was suggesting of an appeal to the board. We would need that direction today to prepare that.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Helm.
Wouldn't we have done that before we just made this motion and seconded?
No, because you saw the cha, this is where you give direction to staff. You've authorized for a second hearing.
I'm looking at Mr. Johnson's face during this. I don't, I don't, I, I'm fine with the way it is.
I'm, I'm, I'm good. I'm going to talk to my good friend, Commissioner West, here afterwards.
I'm not mad. Votes don't always go your way. I made my case. It's okay.
So I think the consensus is, continue as it is.
Bring it as it is for your second hearing.
Have some other discussions.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dan and Caleb. All right, so commissioners, we're just, we're going to delay the start of your board retreat, so don't, because you had to leave here in, in eight minutes, and there's more to do. So we'll finish the business meeting, your retreat will start when you get there. All right. Moving on, your second public hearing is first reading of an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 2.16, Budget Development. There are no county general funds involved. I will present this. Commissioners, as you know, in May 2025, at the Clackamas County Budget Committee meeting, the Budget Committee, which includes all five of you, made several motions. Those in particular were requiring that the county have a 30-year financial forecast that is audited by an external vendor, that any change in general funds must be preauthorized with the board if those general funds were not priorly previously appropriated, and other budget development proposals. I've spoken with you at several issue sessions over the last several months, and you have agreed with my recommendation to codify in the Clackamas County Code several budget development policies, so they're all in one place. And the reason to put them in the county code is to ensure even better transparency with the public on how you are spending their money, to have accountability to staff, to the board, and board to the public on how you're spending the public's money, and to be fiscal, fiscally clear and responsible to the public. So the proposed ordinance, which Andrew, if you'd show it on the screen, it's here, the attachment, I quickly want to walk through it. So it identifies under budget development that we will have a 30-year general fund forecast, the next page, please, Andrew, which is reviewed annually by an external party, that any general funds that have not been budgeted, or if a department anticipates their general fund will go over budget, I will bring to you immediately for a discussion with you, will not wait until the May process. Clear, it makes it specifically clear, the county will follow supplemental budget law that complies with Oregon revised statutes and the local budgeting manual produced by the Oregon Department of Revenue, that we follow the definitions of what a balanced budget means, what a structurally sound budget means, and what a sustainable budget means. The definitions are in the code, and that I, the administrator, as your budget officer, must meet all three definitions, as well as ensure a 30-year financial forecast that has a positive ending balance in the budget that I propose to the Budget Committee. Finally, that we follow our existing contingency and reserves policy, that 5% of county's general fund is held in contingency, and 10% of the county's general fund held in reserves. All of these in a single county code, Chapter 2.16. I recommend you adopt this today or move forward at your first hearing, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. All right, questions?
Just want to say, great work. Thank you. I know, not only do I appreciate it, I know our colleagues on the Budget Committee will also appreciate it, as well as the citizens of the county, knowing that we're trying to be as sound and responsible with these dollars as possible.
Seeing done, I will now open the public hearing on this discussion item, so clerk, will you moderate that for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you're attending this meeting in person and wish to comment on this specific matter, this is a reminder, please fill out a blue card and deposit it in the box that can be found by the center doors. This is a final call if you wish to comment on this specific matter, to please fill out a blue card and deposit it in the box by the center doors. Mr. Chair, seeing no members of the public physically present who wish to comment on this specific item, with your assent, I'll now move to those attending virtually. If you're attending this meeting virtually and wish to comment on this specific public hearing, this is your opportunity to please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. And this is a final call if you're attending this meeting virtually and wish to comment on this specific public hearing, to please raise your hand. Mr. Chair, I see no other members of the public physically or virtually present who wish to speak on this matter today.
Thank you. I'll now close the public hearing. Any other comments from, like, colleagues? Commissioner West.
God, I swear, I am, I don't know what's happening to me, but I, I understand the 30-year forecast, and I'll support this because I know it's important to the majority of the board. I also tend to think of it as magical thinking a little bit, going that far out and potentially hamstringing us from being nimble with our budget, of how, and I, and I totally hear, and we've had discussions about this already, but because 30 years out is so outside the norm of bodies like this to go that far out, and I'm appreciative that we are consistently operating in the black, and I share those values. Sometimes I feel like maybe going 30 years out is not a clear picture of our reality when we keep trying to attain that goal, because so much can happen, not just tomorrow, but even in the next five years, that completely shifts all of that. So I'll support this, because I think it, you know, I, we've worked in, and we've worked well together as a board on these budget issues, but I, I do think it might be, and maybe government needs to be hamstrung a little bit in its spending efforts. Clearly lately, I have been the spender on this board, but, but I don't know if we struck that balance with this, but I will be, I'll be supporting it, but I, I do have some concerns around that 30-year mark.
Yeah, my only comment, I appreciate Commissioner West, you saying that, and for anyone who has greater comfort with the five-year forecast, just take that first five years and apply it. If you have greater comfort with a 10-year forecast, you can take the first 10 years of that 30 years and apply it. It's most accurate, obviously, in a one year, you know, you lose a little bit in two years because you can't predict everything. But I think the way I would probably tell my, my constituents out there is that when we buy a home on a 30-year mortgage, I think we, I think we, maybe you don't have a 30-year forecast in mind, but I think we are making, signing a document and a commitment to pay that mortgage for 30 years, right? And, and we're probably not going to, we're probably not going to overspend or overcommit ourselves to something that we can't fund. So knowing the gravity of our budget, knowing the gravity of the services we provide everyone, you know, and I, I really take to heart, you know, when I took the oath of office several times, but I, I take, you know, I take it really seriously. And part of the reason that I'm here today is because I'm really concerned about the fiscal status of not just the county, but government in general. We got to hold the line, and I think this is a responsible thing for us to do in light of the fact that we're making these large payments for a courthouse, which I didn't support, at least, at least the, the funding model for the, for the courthouse. I supported the courthouse, but not the funding model. So what I share, I think, with, with Chair Roberts is, is that we're dealing with something that we, I, I thought we could do differently and better.
Can I, I'm going to let him respond first.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Chair. I agree, the majority of this board had nothing to do with the financing model of the courthouse. The courthouse predated at least three of these commissioners, right? One, you did not support it, I believe Commissioner Schrader did, but this board is vastly different. We don't know what all our funding mechanisms are going to be beyond even five years, let alone 10. We don't even know that we, this board will be probably vastly different than it is today. We, we don't know, I mean, there's so many variables. I don't think it's an exact comparison to my 30-year mortgage or our 30-year mortgage, or maybe some of you have a 15-year mortgage, whatever, but I, we do want to make sure that we're, we have to also be responsible within the now also. And the now is, how do we get less people off the streets? How do we make sure people get care? And we're nimble and, and building out systems that truly do that. We're not getting help from the state, we're not getting great, bailed out by the feds, and we have to figure out how to, like, deal with a crisis now. And I'm sure there'll be crises 30 years from now, but nobody on this board will be here to deal with those. And somehow using some magical thinking and a projection so far out, I share those values. We have the exact same values, Commissioner, we took the exact same oath. But I am overwhelmed with the, what seems to almost be now crises to chronic and never-ending, and how, and we're at the end of the day, no one's going to solve those but us, because we're the boots on the ground, we're the last stop. And I'm wondering if this 30-year projection, principally I get it, but are we being also practical? And I, I, listen, like, there's not a lot of daylight between the five of us on this issue, but I am, I'm just, I'm going to support this. My heart is concerned with the now also.
Commissioner Helm.
And I don't disagree with that. I, I do want to ask, hiring an external, external vendor to audit that 30-year financial forecast, is that a yearly thing? I don't see a timeline in there for how often we're hiring an external...
Excuse me, it is annually. It says that in the last sentence. Forecast shall be reviewed annually by an external party.
Okay. I, I think the number one thing I hear from constituents is government wastes their money, right? And I think this shows that we're trying not, really hard not to, and that's why I support it. I agree that the 30-year forecast is long for a government, generally, they go at five. Usually that's like max is five. But I think this is a good way to keep us on track, and for course correction, I think we're going to need that, especially with funding problems going forward. And I, I don't think it's a bad thing to do. I, and I, you know, I think it just keeps us honest, it keeps us transparent, and should something come up that, out of left field, you know, we will have to course correct, and this gives us the opportunity to say what that could be like. So I, I support this, and I hope it's not a burden on finance to have the external auditor come in once a year. I hope it's just a, but we'll see. But yeah, I do support it.
Gary.
I want to be transparent, my finance staff does not support this, but they're going to do what the board directs them to do, and what you direct me to do. All right, so Commissioner Schrader has her hand raised.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are. Please proceed, Commissioner.
Okay, great. I'm going to support this today, because I do think that one of the things that we have to, have to prove to the public is that we are accountable and transparent. I know that this is, might be somewhat unusual way to do this because of the forecasting length and the uncertainty, but I do think we need to have something in place. Again, and remember that it's not going to be written in stone, and what I mean by that is, again, given the changing circumstances and, you know, not being able to look at a crystal ball, either we will come back and modify, or future boards will come back and modify. What this does is give us a construct of, of, again, how we can be accountable and how we can be transparent, and, and the idea that we are managing extremely frugally and very closely, because I do think that's what our public wants. So I stand in support of this today.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Just a comment, a short one, I'll try and keep it brief. The, I actually do agree with you, Commissioner West, that, and I also really agree with finance, that doing a 30-year forecast is challenging at best. And I feel like it's, it's extremely challenging to do a five-year forecast right now, as I see it. Right now, there's so much unstableness in this country, from tariffs to what is our coal going to be, to really jobs, and I think I'm just struggling looking out at the next year, because there is so much uncertainty, and so when I think of 30 years, I ju, I just think that's a, a big challenge. And while I, I hear what you're saying, Paul, you know, that, well, the five-year is that kind of the, just a step of that 30-year, and I, I somewhat understand that, but I kind of come back to really kind of looking at what staff says, and so I do struggle with that. I'll just be upfront with you about it. So I think with that, we're probably at a point, if somebody wants to make a motion, is, is that where you're at, Gary?
Yes. Chair, I move. Will you read the ordinance by title only?
Second.
All right. Commissioner Savis has moved to read the ordinance by title only. Commissioner Helm has seconded it.
Public hearing? Public hearing's over. Done that.
Yeah, I know. I did. And I closed it too, so.
I was just, I was tracking so many steps.
So it's now time for further discussion, if anybody has any other comments. Go ahead.
I'm going to be like a reluctant yes. Maybe we'll revisit this again. It's an ordinance, though. The struggle between, like, real service delivery in a way that's more impactful than our, and we've done in a way that's more impactful than all our neighbors, we haven't wasted taxpayer dollars in this county, we've made them go extra far, we have been really good stewards, we have got, yesterday we got crazy creative without any state help, without any federal help, to like figure out how to build a huge project and a shelter. We're trying, so, so we're making that work, but... and, and out of the, I'm just, I'll be a reluctant yes, but I do feel, I don't know if we're stopping ourselves from being as responsive today as we need to be. I have a ton of empathy for your thoughts, Chair, and some agreement there. We'll see. But yeah, that's where I'm at.
Okay. All right, clerk, we're ready, I think.
Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Schrader, I'm afraid you're muted. You are still muted, Commissioner Schrader. We can return to you, Commissioner Schrader.
I just unmuted, I think, just a little bit of confusion. Sometimes I don't know whether I need to unmute, or as we come to a vote, if you guys can automatically, you know, just realize, unmute me. My, my vote is aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Helm.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, Mr. Chair.
All right. Clerk, would you please assign the ordinance a number and read by title only?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The ordinance is numbered zero, five dash twenty, twenty-five. An ordinance amending county code, chapter two point one six, budget development.
Thank you. If there's no other objection, the second reading will be during our regular business meeting on December 4th, 2025. Gary, you're trying to pick the pace up here.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda for the Board of County Commissioners. Andrew, would you please read the consent agenda?
Consent agenda for the Board of County Commissioners. Item A, elected officials. One, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Two, approval of governmental contracting amendment with acts and enterprise for law enforcement equipment and software. Contract value is $21,082,868.72 for 10 years. Funding to the sheriff's public safety levy, no county general funds are involved. B, county council. One, approval of resolution to adopt a limited indemnity policy for employee certifications of federal grant terms under board delegated authority, no county general funds are involved. C, transportation development. One, approval of permanent non-exclusive utility easement can be utility for development of the county fair multipurpose building, no county general funds are involved. Two, approval of grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for a transportation safety action plan. Agreement value is $156,110.15 for 10 months. Funding to the Oregon Department of Transportation passed through federal funds and required match of $29,035.15 in county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Three, approval of a grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for a traffic safety marketing campaign. Grant value is $522,354.97 for 11 months. Funding to the Oregon Department of Transportation passed through federal funds and required match of $92,010.82 in county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Four, approval of grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for creation of a traffic safety marketing video. Grant value is $187,512 for 11 months. Funding is the Oregon Department of Transportation passed through federal funds and required match of $37,512 in county road funds. No county general funds are involved. D, health, housing, and human services. One, approval to accept directly appropriated funding from Oregon Housing and Community Services to continue the Oregon eviction diversion prevention program. Appropriation value is $1,520,170 for two years. Funding to the Oregon Housing and Community Services. No county general funds are involved. Two, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Sandy to support the Mount Hood Express boring lifeline and elderly and disabled transportation services and programs. Agreement value is $3,203,949 for 20 months. Funding is through statewide transportation improvement funds and required match of $55,000 in budgeted county general funds. Three, approval of a resubmission of amendment to a subrecipient agreement with TRIMET due to minor administrative changes to a statewide transportation improvement funds agreement. Amendment value is $5,254,811 for 20 months. Total agreement value is $11,120,380 for four years. Funding through statewide transportation improvement funds, no county general funds are involved. Four, approval of an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with TRIMET for transportation to essential services for seniors, individuals with disabilities. Amendment value is $280,402 for eight months. Total agreement value is $607,119 for two years. Funding is through TRIMET, no county general funds are involved. Mr. Chair, that concludes the Board of Commissioners' consent agenda.
Very good, Andrew. Any colleagues wish to remove any item from the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Savis has moved to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Hill has seconded it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Helm.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, Mr. Chair.
I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as Extension 4-H Service District Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
Next is the consent agenda for the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District. Andrew, would you please read the consent agenda?
Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District Board of Directors' consent agenda. Item A, approval of an amendment to a memorandum of understanding with Clackamas Community College to increase funding to the Extension Education Center. Amendment value is $3,600,000 with no time increase. Total agreement value is $15,100,000 for three years. Funding is through Clackamas County Extension and 4-H District Funds. No county general funds are involved. Mr. Chair, that concludes the Extension and 4-H Service District Board of Directors' consent agenda.
Thank you. Anybody want to remove anything from the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
I move, we approve the Extension and 4-H consent agenda.
Second.
Director Helm has moved to approve the consent agenda. Director Savis has seconded it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, would you please call the poll?
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Helm.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'll now adjourn as Extension and 4-H Service District Board of Directors and convene as the Water Environment Services Board. Gary?
Next is the consent agenda for Water Environment Services. Andrew, would you please read the consent agenda?
Water Environment Services Board of Directors' consent agenda. Item A, approval of a contract with In situ form technologies for pipe and manhole repairs. Contract value is $879,372.50 for seven months. Funding is through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. B, approval of a grant application to the Oregon Department of Emergency Management for backup generator capacity at the Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facility. Anticipated grant value is $1 million for three years. Funding is through Oregon Department of Emergency Management and $250,000 of required matching Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Funds. No county general funds are involved. Mr. Chair, that concludes the Water Environment Services Board of Directors' consent agenda.
Okay, do any of our directors wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda for West as read.
Second.
Director West has approved, has moved to approve the consent agenda as read. Director Helm has seconded it. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the poll.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Helm.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, Mr. Chair.
I will now adjourn as the Water Environment Services Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Gary?
Thank you. Next is County Administrator update. I do, and I know we're short on time, but I do want to share some quick updates with you. First, our Technology Services Director, Lanu Parapili, received the 2025 Chief Information Officer of the Year Award from the Oregon Chapter of the Society for Information Management. This is a worldwide nonprofit known for technology, known for supporting technology executives. Here's what the judge has said about Lanu. "Your leadership at Clackamas County exemplifies the very best of public sector innovation. The judging panel was very impressed by your people-first philosophy, your ability to align technology with mission-driven service, and the way you've embedded empathy, inclusion, and governance into the foundation of your county's technology strategy." Bravo, brava to Lanu for this incredible recognition. Next, the Clackamas County Courthouse received national awards at the Design Build Institute of America Conference last week. The Clackamas County project was named the Merit and Excellence Awards of all federal, state, county, municipal projects in the United States. We were the top award. Merit and Excellence Awards, and Nancy Bush, our county operating officer, received the Inspired Owner Award for all federal, state, county, municipal projects in the United States. So a great testament to Nancy and our team on the work on the courthouse. Now, some quick announcements. Starting in December, Board of County Commissioners, this room will be under construction, the board hearing room, to replace the aging equipment and technology in this room that has not been updated in 30 years. Because of that, your meetings in December will be in the Development Services Building Auditorium, first floor, room 115. All of your public meetings will be in that building. We will still stream your meetings on Zoom and YouTube as usual. We'll put all notices on the website and signages so the public knows not to come to this room, but to the Development Services Building for all your meetings in December. In January, you'll be back in this room with a fresh, new facelift. Finally, the board, you will be on recess from November 17th through November 30th. Next week, you will be at the Association of Oregon Counties Conference in Eugene from November 18 to 20, and the following week, you're on Thanksgiving break. Therefore, the next board business meeting is not until Thursday, December 4, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. in the county's Development Services Building Auditorium. Those are my updates. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Gary. In the interest of time, because we are short, I even, I'm going to open up to all my colleagues if they have something to comment on. If they don't, we might be able to move on. Is everybody good with that? So, thank you, everybody. So on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, thank you for joining us, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.